We're gonna call this meeting to order, special meeting of the city council. Uh, we have dispensed with the. Uh, pledge of allegiance for this meeting. So the first order of business is to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Any discussion on the minutes, any revisions needed? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion, so the motion carries and the minutes are approved. Next item is a consideration of a library design and engineering contract with. With ADM group. Is there staff presentation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you, Mayor, members of council, business item for approval is the contract with ADM. It's a linking contract. For architectural and engineering design services. Uh, this is proposed through the one GPA cooperative contract. See, the one GPA we've used in the past. For pavement preservation, we used it for uh, Stags Park with Roner or construction. So it's a, it's a contract we're familiar with. It allows municipalities, school districts, and some private sector to basically piggyback off of in order to avoid a, a. Having to solicit a project and spend the time and money to do that. Uh, given the fast-paced schedule for the project up on the hilltop, the Alphria School District, uh, Performing Arts Center. And the city's obligations to at least, uh, parallel the project, uh, it's a fast-paced schedule. City wants to contract with ADM, who is also the designer for that performing arts center. Uh, projects will run concurrently, a great opportunity for both projects to share coordination efforts. For things like optimizing the site layout, architectural elements, aesthetic elements, hilltop. Um, elements that, and, and combining with both the downtown Litchfield Square elements. Uh, one important, very important item up here, utility coordination and design for both. Uh, the PAC, the library. We also have the phasing that we will do in the future on the hilltop, so we can optimize the utility extensions. Uh, in the design effort, stakeholder coordination and collaboration is gonna be key. We'll be working with. Uh, all the hilltop entities, Alphria School District, various uh, city entities. And using the same engineering firm, who will use the same sub consultants. Uh, for both projects, uh, is gonna optimize both, uh, you know, fairly quick timeline and, uh, we'll see some realizations on. On dollars saved as well. Overall design fee, just over five hundred thousand dollars, which is ten percent of the overall budget. Eleven percent of the construction budget. Uh, that is six point five percent architectural fee. And about three and a half percent for the engineering fee. Uh, that does fall in line with the project of this, uh, category base. And right in line with the engineering, uh, the industry standards for costs like this. Uh, so with that, if there are any questions or discussions?
Uh, well, I have a question. It appears that we've set this budget at, at the amount of money that we obtained from the county. And the amount of money that we obtained from the county had nothing to do with the cost to build this building. We had a ten thousand square foot building and, and I don't. At least when I went into these discussions, I did not anticipate spending five hundred dollars a square foot to build a shell. That seems excessive, and so that's my first question is what? It seems to me that we oughta have a, a better understanding of what does a shell gonna cost? And the improvements around the shell. To set a more realistic budget for the actual, uh, the actual project. Because these costs for things like architects are being spun off of this, this cost of the overall project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, so the five million dollars was a, was a dollar amount that. The county, I think through, and, and Matthew can chime in, uh, we worked with the county on that. We, we developed a cost model. Generally around five million dollars. And the way the one GPA contract works, which is actually the way a lot of co- uh, architects do work anyways, is they wanna. Know what the city's budget, the pri- or, or the developer's budget is. And contra- and, and architectural fees are, are largely based on the construction budget. So if you look at. One of the last couple pages of the one GPA contract, uh, attachment, there is a table in there and based on the type of category. Of construction, which this one literally, it's page twenty-three of the overall attachment. Um, let me get to.
What pa- what page is it within our packet?
Uh, Terry, do you know that, the overall?
The packet's a hundred and thirteen pages. Those tw- you're saying it's twenty-four, the page number twenty-four in their, in their, in their item?
Yeah, if you look at the top, sir, if you. Twenty-two of thirty-three. There is a table that discusses the group category. And it's based on construction cost. Our group A, the word libraries literally falls within there, and that. Does contemplate. The shell costs, as tenant improvements are usually an additional. Sometimes a di- different, most of the time a different consultant, a different architect who specifies in tenant improvements will do that. So they. A lot of times they preclude the cost, so in this situation, it falls right in line with what we're doing.
I don't, I, I, I'm having trouble finding that page.
Let me see if I can.
My, my contract goes through and is numbered through about seventeen. And then there's a bunch of pages that are not numbered.
Terry or Marie, do you know what page it is in the actual council packet?
I'm looking at it right now, give me just a sec. I believe it's page twenty-eight.
And Keith, these are the same rates that Alphria is getting for their building, correct?
Yes, sir.
These are the hourly rates.
Uh, go, uh, one more page back.
Page twenty-seven.
Okay.
So project type, group A.
So, my, I guess my, my, this is exactly what I'm saying. I don't think this building, there's no, I don't think anyway, anyway, Nate, that this shell is gonna cost five million dollars. If it does, I think we've wasted money. There's gonna be other costs for things like they're part of the, the library's share of the roundabout. They're gonna do things like that, that, that are gonna be taken out of that five million, so that the cost to build this building, I. I don't see how we could justify more than two or three hundred dollars a square foot for a shell. So, I'm just.
I did, I did wanna clarify the five hundred, the four hundred fifty dollars per square foot includes all site improvements and shell.
Is that include the roundabout? Cause they're not gonna design the roundabout.
It includes a parking lot, the utility extensions, the striping, the landscaping, the. Uh, fire line, the fire pump, the sidewalk adjacent to the building.
So it's, it's unfortunate we don't have, we don't have the vice mayor here, cause I'd like to hear what he, what he spent for his shell. But we do have our contractor, Councilman Romack, do it, is it, does four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for the shell and the improvements? For parking lots, does that make, does that make sense?
I, I haven't looked at it that closely, Tom, but, um. Uh, yeah, I think it does. I think we're gonna find out if we, if we go into it and all of the, uh, the, like the water line, sewer and water lines that have to be put in. Uh, and, and I don't know, Keith can tell us where that's gonna stop. But at some point, it, it has to be absorbed by, you know, the next builder down the line. Uh, the, the next building. I, I just, uh, uh. It, it's hard to pull it apart and say this much is gonna be for the shell. And this much for the parking lot to the south, and this much for the utilities, et cetera, et cetera.
The thing is, I think we need to set a realistic expectation. And so if we go in, if we go into this project telling everybody, we're gonna spend five million dollars on this building. Then we're gonna spend five million dollars on this building.
Yes.
Correct, that's my problem. And, and so, it's like we've. I understand we have five million dollars, and if we have to spend five million dollars to get what we want. Uh, you know, that's, that's a, that's a great building for the community and for the, the, you know, the southwest valley, that's one thing. But if, literally, I, I was part of these discussions about, about reimbursement from the county. And these numbers were not, were not based on anything that I looked at as being, you know, a realistic construction budget. So using them to justify. These contracts, I think is wrong. So we have to make, we, we need to, we need to have something in these contracts. That anticipates the fact that we would expect this to come in at a lower cost. And if it does, then we need to, we need to adjust these fees.
Good, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the one GPA does do a pretty good job of, of, uh, ferreting all these out. Um, but aside from that, I can tell you that I've talked to more than one architect about this, and in fact, ADM. Uh, came to the table saying that a project, when we first started talking to them, they said it was gonna be closer to six to eight hundred dollars a square foot. Um, industry standard, they said they just got done doing a few of these. Um, I, I will say the, the chatter in the architectural engineering world. The four, complete out-the-door site improvements, building, everything. Uh, because you are right, we, we were closer to two to three million dollars for the building, so it was closer to somewhere around two to three hundred. Matthew, I think, I, I'm trying to remember exactly, but I wanna say we were right around three hundred.
That's right.
Three, three square foot for just the shell building. So when you include all the side improvements, I mean, there's thousands and thousands of cubic yards of dirt that have to be hauled away. They've got a demo. A lot of, they gotta demo the pump, they've gotta take out that. Fish, that, that pond that was built, halfway built. A lot of site improvements, the connection, they gotta dig all the way out across Litchfield Road. They gotta do the designs to, to bring all the utilities across. This is full engineering for the entire site as well. Um, in this cost, so.
And this is the design for the TIs as well, but not, obviously not the actual TI work, but the design of the TIs, correct?
This is just for the shell.
Okay, it's not, it doesn't include any TIs.
Yeah, TIs are estimated at another two, between two and three million dollars. That'll come from the county.
Just to be clear, we're not paying for that, that's library district.
Uh, my, my concern is that we at least have some indication, some expectation in this contract that we expect this to come in less than, less than this. I mean, that, it, it, if we don't, we will spend this plus. And we've seen this already in the way that we spent money on, on, on Litchfield Square. I mean, it, it, it was, uh, it, you know, it was like a black hole. Where we put in very, very expensive features that maybe they bring people value. But maybe they don't, at least maybe they don't bring as much value as what we paid for some of these things. And I, and we've gotta get this kind of cost consciousness in city staff to start with. And you've gotta pass it on to these architects and these builders, so we don't end up with a project that is, that's just not justified.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I hope Matthew could back me up on this, but I can tell you, I'm, I'm on top of these guys and I'm beating them up all the time. This, this contract is the third round from ADM, just from me going through them, so we, we do go in with a cost conscious. But I do wanna have realistic expectations of industry standards and, and, and while we do talk about. Other things, other costs, like in the past, we've talked about sidewalks, it still costs four and five dollars a square foot. Uh, it doesn't anymore, it costs six and eight dollars a square foot. Um, so, so these prices are still going up to this day. Uh, and, and we have scrutinized this down and, and we, we're actually fortunate, I, I give. A lot of, uh, props to the one GPA contract, they have held firm, they don't allow price adjustments. While the, uh, consultant is on the one GPA contract, they've been on this for three years now. So these rates have been held for that long. Um, so, so we are getting some, some good economies here with using this one GPA, because if we just contacted directly with ADM. Uh, I, I could tell you this price would be more than that.
I, I would agree that Keith will work with them to keep the cost down. Mayor, if I'm hearing it right, you'd like to see some language added to this document to say that. The city would expect these, these costs to be lower or to be as controlled as possible, something along those lines.
The city wants to review each of the features and the cost of the features to ensure that the public is getting a fair value for what we're designing.
Yes, sir.
Can I cl- can I clarify, are we talking more on the construction side, on, on the second business item?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're talking about both, uh, you know, and then, I mean, speci- and then there are some specific questions about. The five hundred thousand, we. In their, in their layout or breakdown of this, of this cost, there's thirty thousand for design review and thirty thousand for site plan review. And my question is whether it, it appears that, that they say if needed, I think.
All the items are allowances.
And I'm curious, what is it that they're gonna do on design review that, that the city can't do itself? Or site plan review?
Mr. Mayor, I, I should have clarified in my presentation, everything listed under supplemental services is an allowance. And cannot be used without written permission by the city.
So I'm asking you, what is it that you anticipate? Do you anticipate spending money for design review or site plan review? That is, that is for services that are gonna be provided by the architect. As opposed to costs that the city is gonna be incurring in, with its staff.
Mr. Mayor, that site plan, uh, the site plan would be modifications based on Randy or myself, uh, the, the city planner. Where we go in there and sp- uh, site, the site plan needs to be vetted before it would go to a design review. Design review would be based on what we internally would require them to present to the design review board, so if we want elevations. Aesthetics, bring in samples, it's, it's, it's an open. It's, it's, it allows us the flexibility to use all or none, so if we're gonna bypass of. Any part of this, or if we want a little more detail, they would draw off of this allowance, and of course. Using any of that has to be by written permission by me. So right now, no, nothing in the supplemental services is even anything they're allowed to spend right now.
Well, yeah, I would anticipate that you, you know, that working through them, we're gonna get, you know, the, in the, from the base contract, we're gonna get. Elevations from all four sides.
Yes, sir, this, uh, once we get to the, the ball rolling and we start getting plans, um. They, you get to a point when you're doing the design development and the architectural plans where. If you go back, it costs more money, so that, they add these upfront costs, they pull them out a little bit, so we can tweak and modify them. If we wanted to see a different elevation here, a different isometrics, we take care of all that in this upfront designer view board level. Then once we approve it, they go in and they modify their actual construction documents. To, to commensurate those comments and those changes and what was approved by designer review board. I, for instance, I don't see them using the Alta Boundary Survey, the traffic study isn't something we're gonna make them do. Because that's already in a different court. Um, the civil engineering is eighty-eight thousand, uh, that's, that, they have their own contra- uh, their own sub consultant contract with. With Colliers, Colliers hasn't even written the scope yet. Um, because this is a, this is a lump sum estimate they gave them, so before they're even allowed to spend that eighty-eight thousand, I have to get. Colliers' design contract, and I'm gonna vet it and review it, and if I don't like parts of it, we'll take it out and maybe they'll only spend sixty thousand or. Or, you know, forty thousand, whatever that will be.
You know, that, my, and my concern again is that we, we try to get this thing screwed down to where we save as much as we can on these costs. So that we have some funds that are left over that we can devote to this roundabout. You know, that's a very, that's a huge project cost that, that we're incurring. And the anticipation was in agreeing to having a roundabout as opposed to a stoplight. The agreement was based on the idea that we're gonna get contribution from this library project, from the county funds. And we're gonna get contributions from Alphria. So if we spend it all, then we're not gonna have anything, and then the city's gonna be out this money. For the entire cost of the roundabout, which, you know, is, it's gonna be a big hit on our budget.
To Mayor, if I might?
Yes, Councilman Romack.
Um, I, I would strongly suggest that you chat with, uh, Vice Mayor Faith on this. He just finished that, uh, that billing. And, uh, you know that he's got things screwed down pretty tight.
Well, you know, I understand, that's why I'm, I said it was unfortunate the vice mayor wasn't here. Because we will hear about this in the future, you're gonna be gone, Councilman.
I know, guys, darn it.
The rest of us are gonna hear about this from council, from the vice mayor. Even though he missed the meeting where we're gonna, you know, starting this project off. So I agree with you a hundred percent. And trust me, he will hear about the fact that he missed this meeting in the future, I'll hear from him. Alright, so my, my concern, I think, is we, we need to get that flavor worked into this, this relationship with the architect. That, you know, we're looking to pla- for places where we are not creating value for our residents or for. For our residents specifically, but for the whole southwest valley that's gonna use this library. We're looking for places, every place we can save, that is not creating value commensurate with the cost. We need to get that i- as part of the way we approach this whole thing. Are there any other comments? I didn't wanna, don't wanna monopolize this conversation, any other comments from council or questions? Alright, hearing that, I, I would accept a motion that incorporates the, you know, the, the concept of working in the. The overall arch- overarching goal of cost reduction in, uh, you know, in the process of building this, of this building, the, the shell. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Who, who made that? Was it Ron, Councilman Claire?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I didn't, so is it who, was there an opposite, someone voted opposed? It's like everybody's, you, you need to unmute.
No, I was, I was delayed, I was an aye, James.
Alright, John, Councilman Romack, you need to unmute. And Claire, you need, oh, you, you both, you both need to unmute and take a, and vote, vote on this. I am a. Councilman Claire?
Aye.
Okay, so there, the ayes are unanimous for all, oh, Councilman Brandon Watson, I.
Aye.
Alright, so everyone has, has voted yes on this, there's, it's unanimous approval. But again, we need to work this, this attitude into this contract, so, so that the. Architect understands it from the, from the start, because the architect, when they design this, this building. They're gonna, they're gonna drive these costs by the way they design it and the way they spec it. So it's very important that, that we get this across to them as, as they start the project. Alright, next item is, is a, it's with McCarthy Group for the building and the building, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So approval of contract with McCarthy.
Uh, I have a quick presentation on this, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor Council, uh, business item, request for approval, the, it's a phased contract, construction contract with McCarthy and the city. Uh, this, this is a, another cooperative contract, this goes through the city of Scottsdale's Job Order Contracting Contract. Um, this, this additionally allows municipalities, uh, to piggyback off of this, to avoid, uh, the cost and time. Associated with the construction advertisement and bid. Uh, ultimately, you can select the low, the low bidder, the qualified bidder, or a combination of both. The benefit of McCarthy being on this contract is they're also currently contracted with the Alphria School District to build. The PAC, uh, school facility. Um, again, given the fast-paced nature of this project, the designs have not yet been started nor completed. Uh, however, we are obligated to run the projects concurrently. If we did a construction advertisement, it could take up to three months to get under contract. And we wouldn't see the benefits of McCarthy being involved the entire time through our. Collaborative meetings that we'll already have with the PAC, and we'll, uh, given the same ADM contract, the same ADM. Architect, as well as their sub consultants. Uh, so we'll get the benefits, uh, of, of schedule, costs, overall coordination of both projects. Uh, what I like about this is, uh, some, a lot of the general condition items are gonna be, uh, minimized, mobilization. Uh, contractor yard procurements, them having, uh, to select their own internal subcontractors to do the work. They're gonna minimize lead time, uh, field meetings will all happen in the same trailer. Uh, problem resolutions, we'll have cross collaboration between the projects. And not only this, but the roundabout project should be, uh, pretty close to happening around this time. Uh, I anticipate the roundabout project going to a, an actual construction advertisement, but if McCarthy chooses to go after that. Solicitation, uh, then they will also be able to come in as the best low bid, because they'll already be out there for the roundabout. Now, this contract is set up to be phased, we worked with the, uh, city attorney to do that. Uh, the main reason for this, um, long lead items, very specifically to the, uh, SES. Can, uh, electrical cabinet is fifty to sixty weeks out. Uh, by that time, we would be behind, so, uh, the initial phase of this, which would have to be done through an amendment. Uh, to this contract efforts approved by council, to even use phase one, would be for funds, which would be in the neighborhood. Depending on the size of the SES, we're already talking eighty to a hundred and ten thousand dollars to just buy the SES for a size. Uh, that we're looking at for this library. Uh, overall project budget was five million, as we discussed before, and after we take the architectural fees of five hundred thousand, we're four point five million. Four fifty a square foot. Um, this is, again, complete building shell and all the site improvements, parking lot, striping, landscape, irrigation, all the utility extensions. The paving patchback, uh, we also anticipate that a portion, and Mr. Mayor, you touched on this a little bit, um, see how much we can have. Participate with the roundabout costs, uh, given, um, the economy is a scale and, and that we anticipate the prices coming in. Under four and a half million, even a little bit, we can utilize some of that money for their portion of what the roundabout entrance would be on that west leg. Um, the other benefit of this phased contract is if, for some reason, we get through. The final design plans and we get a cost by McCarthy and we are not happy with it. For one reason or many reasons, we have the latitude, the ability to hardbid it. To, or, you know, alternative delivery, but I don't think that's the right way to go. But if for some reason we do not like McCarthy's costs, since this is a phased contract, we cannot do phase two. And we can solicit the project, um, for advertisement, so. Uh, that's it for my, my discussion, uh, if there's any questions and other discussions?
Before I have my, in, interject my, my, my concerns, are there any, any, uh, questions or comments from council? Okay, we'll go back to the same concerns I had with the architect, that, uh, you know, that we've set the budget at, you know, our, we've set our expectations in the. In the, in our writing, we've set our expectation at four and a half million. And that does not include a portion of the roundabout. What we have talked as we went through the, through this whole project was. We're gonna put a roundabout in, it's this, we're gonna treat it the same way as we treat any other improvement, it's improvements in the intersection. So that roughly twenty-five percent of those improvements are gonna be allocated to the library and twenty-five percent allocated to the Alphria project. So I think it's important in this contract that we have that expectation in the contract. That we expect to get a twenty-five percent, um, contribution to the cost of this roundabout. Right now, we have no contribution required, and we're expecting costs to come in at four, four point five million, which is four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So that's my concern.
Mr. Mayor. Sir, if you're talking, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent of the roundabout, that'd be about half a million? So are you, you looking to add some language to, to say that, that we would be anticipating that to be part of it, as part of this document?
Again, I, I think you need to set an expect, the trouble when you set expectations is people will try to meet your expectation. So if your expectation is you're gonna spend four and a half million dollars to build this shell and the improvements around the shell without the roundabout. Then we will spend four and a half million dollars doing that.
Right.
What I'm saying is that you need to have your expectation be that you're not gonna spend more than four million dollars for everything other than that roundabout.
Right, and there's.
And then try to meet that expectation. You know, don't set your expectations so that you expect not to, not to get what we thought we were gonna get.
Okay, I understand. Uh, wo- would that be a minimum, uh, part of the motion?
Well, again, I think it should be, I, I think we need to set our expectations at where they really are and not at some number that's, you know, that's. That, you know, we used to call them boxcar numbers. Where'd it come from? It came from the side of a frickin' boxcar, we just happened to see it, and so that's our number. You know, we need, we, you know, we need to set it, well, we, again, you get what you expect.
Right.
So if we set it, and, and that's true in everything we do, it's a tru- certainly the way business works. You don't expect to lose money, no, you expect to make a profit. So if you start out expecting unrealistically high costs, you're gonna get, which you're gonna get those costs. Uh, and I, I want the expectations to be at least set at, at what we wanted to see come out of this project. Which was to get the shell, all the improvements, and some reasonable portion of the cost of this intersection.
So why don't, why don't we amend the document to say that? That we would plan for roughly four million for the shell and for site work, and for half a million toward the, toward the roundabout project?
That, that should be our goal, that's what I'm saying, does it?
Yes, sir.
If you can't meet your goal, then you can come to us and say, you know, we cannot meet your expectations. But my expectation to you is that I wanna see this thing come in. So that the building costs and, you know, are, are, are closer to four million dollars, not four and a half.
I agree.
And i- if I may, uh, so in, in one of the things I did mention, Mr. Mayor and Matthew, is that. We will scrutinize their costs. we will scrutinize their cost proposal when it does come in. Um, one of the things, and I think it's probably a good idea that we can include language, Matthew, in this contract is that we will expect to use the economy as a scale from the PAC costs. So that's a seventy million. Where, where were we at last time, Matthew? Seventy, eighty million? Um, that being said, how big of a project that is, the unit cost for concrete, asphalt, building, supply, building furnishings or building materials, we're going to get those economies of scale on a bigger project. So my expectation this whole time is that when we get the cost for this library, we're going to get those same smaller unit rates that were used because they're going to use the same procurement, they're going to use the same subcontractors, ironworkers. So our, my expectation, which again, we can put into language, Matthew, into this, is that we will get those realized economies of scales, uh, from the PAC project.
Since, that's exactly, exactly what I want you to do. I mean, you, you need to get that upfront with McCarthy so they understand what you expect to see from them. We do expect economies of scale, we do expect lower unit costs. And the other things that I would expect is that when we have these meetings every, every, you know, if we do them every day or every month or every week, where we go over the project and do project review, I would not expect to have McCarthy have a representative that is being paid for by the Alfría people and a representative that's being paid for by us. Okay, we need one representative, one team. And it doesn't need to be adjusted because now they have two contracting parties and so they get paid twice. So it's, there's a whole variety of economies that should be there. And we have to, I think we need to put it in our agreement so that everybody is clear about it upfront. So when we get the first billings, we, you know, we're going to go through it and look for that.
I'll agree, sir.
So is there, is, is there any further comments by anyone from council? If not, is there a motion to approve entering into a contract with McCarthy for the building of the library shell and, and site improvements, uh, modified by the discussions on expectations that we've had, uh, between council and staff today? Need a motion, people?
So moved with the, uh, additional language that you mentioned, Tom.
Okay, is there a second? Alright, seconded by the Councilman Romack. Is there any further discussion? All the council members, please unmute. If you, if you're in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are you here? Okay, so do we have an aye from Councilman James?
Aye.
And an aye from Councilman Roman? Okay. Councilman Brandon Watson, you were muted. Are you aye?
I'm here, I cannot get unmuted. Aye, aye.
So please stay unmuted, everyone on the council. And is there anyone who would like to vote no? Are there any, anyone in opposition? Are there any ayes? Alright, seeing that and seeing that you're all unmuted, I'm going to declare it as a unanimous vote to approve with the, with the modifications to the contract to add in the expectations and, you know, try to bring this project in at, you know, at a four million dollar number, plus the roundabout. I think that completes our business for today. Is there, there's no need for an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Oh, excuse me.
Can I get Mr. Poland's affiliation, which company he is with?
He's with McCarthy, Terry.
Thank you.
That's good, Mr. Poland. I don't, oh, there you are. Um, I'm, I'm happy you were able to join us and you could hear directly from, at least from one person on the council, and I think it's probably supported by everyone in the council. We're very happy to go into this project, we're excited about it. This is going to be transformative to our community and to that hilltop. But we want to make sure that as we go through the project, process, that we are in fact getting value for our residents and the, and the people who are going to be using this property that we can defend when we're called upon and in the future to, you know, to, to defend it. So your efforts from McCarthy's standpoint to bring it in and, you know, in a, in a situation where you, you make money, we want you to, to profit by this. But we also want to, we also want to have a cost that's commensurate with the value that we're getting. So you've heard it directly from, you know, from this horse's mouth.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, we, we agree with everything you said. And the scope will be driving, uh, that budget. And we're excited to leverage every possible opportunity we can to provide the city the best value.
Perfect. We're looking forward to working with you, uh, you and your staffs.
Absolutely. Appreciate it and thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Stack it.
Well, all, all of the, all of the muting came off for that one. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you for taking time in your morning to, uh, come to this very important meeting. Uh, it's, we've taken a big step for our community and, you know, I'm excited about, uh, seeing it progress. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Terry. Have a great day.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, guys.